All right, good evening. This is the Dayton Historical Commission December 14th meeting. This meeting is being recorded. And I'm Pat Gales and I'm the chairperson. With us tonight, we have Pam Nickerson, Pat Olson, Bill Pruitt, and Rafa Delpin. And we'll begin with, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Did I say that? Oh, excuse me. Put our names onto the board of the selected.
That's an alias.
Yeah. All right, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And from November 9th to 29th, did everyone have a chance to look over those minutes that were sent? Intertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of November 9th and 29th.
So moved.
There a second?
One second.
Thank you, Pat and Pam. Okay, were there any corrections or amendments to November 9th? Wait a minute, we have to vote, don't we? Voting on the motion to waive November 9th and 29th. Pam?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa? And myself as an aye. Now, a motion to accept the minutes of November 9th. Any amendments or changes? Seeing none. A motion to accept the minutes of November 9th as submitted. Pam, there a second?
One second.
Pat, thank you. And we'll vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Pat?
Hi.
Pam?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Now, a motion to accept the minutes of November 29th. There a second?
Second.
Rafa, any discussion? Let's vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
And I'm also an aye. All right, thank you. Moving on to preservation planning. Tonight joining us is Stacy Spies, our preservation consultant that's working on our project. And she's here to talk about the proposed survey list that she submitted to us. So, I hope everyone had a chance to study it and look at it carefully. I just wanted to get mine out. Stacy, do you want to get started?
I pulled that up on my screen too. Hold on. There we go. So, there we go. I got it all set now. What I did was, I went through the list, you guys, it was a really thorough list. There's not all that much to change. I pulled out the obvious ones, like they were moved, or they were demoed, or they've been so altered that they don't really retain a lot of integrity. Meaning, you know, if you're trying, if it's significant for, you know, someone's role in the Revolutionary War, the building kind of needs to look like it, you know, from that period. So, some of them are a little more altered, so, you know, you could keep them in if you want, you know, just to kind of have the historic document. But if you're looking to kind of use the survey to do, to make decisions about demo delays, about local significance, and preferably preserved, you might, you know, those might be lower on your list. So I kind of arranged it that way. You'll also see, which Pat picked up on, is when I started mapping them all out, it really, certainly around Lower Four Corners especially, it really looks like you've got a historic district there, you know, and so I, you know, there's strength in numbers, I like to say. You know, for example, buildings that might be, this is the inverse of what I just said, buildings that might be a little more altered, if they're within a larger historic district, of really strong buildings that have been really well preserved. They stand a better, you know, kind of strengthen numbers, the whole neighborhood could be National Register eligible, or preferably preserved. So something like, I think there's, I think there's a Baptist church on Main Street right there at Lower Four Corners, and, you know, it seemed, it's been altered, for example, and that one, I don't think would ever, you know, make it on its own, but is part of the whole kind of history of the Lower Four Corners area. I think it's all, it definitely deserves to be in there. So I kind of played around with that as well, to kind of, especially also when you're doing research, it's also super helpful if they're all right near each other, because you, information from one feeds on another. So, those were the two kind of guiding decisions I made. And I know you have many, many, many more houses in other parts of town that I know you want to put on the list, so I was trying to get you the most bang for your buck this time. Do you have questions about specific buildings, or, you know, a wish list of your own?
It's Pleasant Street. It is the Reed Darling House. 19.
I'm sorry, oh, you just broke up for a second. It was something 19?
2219 Pleasant Street. That, if you look at it now, the basic footprint of the house.
Oh, okay. Oh, rats, of course, now it's starting to break up. Can you repeat that? I'm hoping it's not my end.
It could be here too. So, at 2219 Pleasant.
You know what I'm going to try and do? I'm going to turn off my camera and see if maybe it's my end. Let me see if that helps.
I just left.
Okay. You left the premises. I just turned off my camera, maybe if it's bandwidth at my end, maybe that'll help.
So, did you get the address of 2219 Pleasant Street?
Yes.
So, that's been altered?
Oh, okay. Let me pull that one up.
It's the same. It has vinyl siding on it. You go to the backside on the water, it's. So that was, that was one that I questioned. Connection.
Use a phone if she calls that number.
I think I just said the link, not the phone. And can we make sure that it is? That's one of the things I wanted to talk to her about. Thank you.
All right, nothing at my end is weird, so it's just probably just.
Okay. I wouldn't know here. So the question is, am I still breaking up on you?
Yeah. Drip. Yeah, like right now, I don't hear anything coming through at all.
All right, can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah, that is better, actually.
All right. I moved the little microphone thing, so.
Okay, oh, that's actually a lot better. Okay.
Okay, all right, let's try that again.
Just remember that.
So, with 2219 Pleasant Street, it was the Reed Darling House. It is one of the older houses, but it has been significantly altered. Has vinyl siding on it. The backside facing the water is totally different. I just questioned that one.
Yes, that one, I know, that was one of those that, you know, debated back and forth, well, that was an earlier one. That was one we could certainly pull easy enough as well.
It was one of the, you know, 1735 is old. But it doesn't look anything like it did, oh, even, say, 40 years ago.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those where the timbers inside somewhere might be, but, yeah, that could be one of them that gets pulled.
Okay, so, the other one I asked you about was 1860 Milk Street.
Oh, yes, you did, I remember you emailed me about that one. And that one, yeah, that was a, that was a good one. If I recall, I didn't add it just because I didn't want to start monkeying with things too much. Yeah, we could, that could certainly get added in too. I know you've still got a lot of 18th century houses that did.
Yeah. When I looked at that, considering how you were trying to do areas, that would fall into like the Pine Street, Brook Street area as an area map?
I was looking at that too, because I'd have to figure out if it's contiguous, but I think we could certainly, you know, it's all part of that development. Any houses that came in, kind of came in later, so that could be added to Pine.
Right. Is here, Ken, what?
About 1775.
1775, and Milk Street was originally, what, two houses on it?
Lucy Mendoza's.
Lucy Mendoza's and his, so it's an original farm too. Of course, it's all sold off now.
Vital name, in fact, it was 208.
Yeah. How you doing with that?
His house is down in.
That makes me. Yeah, he wants, yeah, and then one of those would be mine, you know. Nate Willie, isn't he? But I can see if we're looking at the area with Pine Street and Brook Street at this time.
So I have a question. Can a single house be considered or?
Sure can. Yeah.
Absolutely. It's, it just makes it an easier sell if there's more than, you know, if there's an area, people seem to band together, they're happier with areas, it's an easier sell, I think.
Yeah, so like he would be in together with the Pine Street folks.
Brook.
Brook Street. Does that make sense to you, Ken?
Yeah, not with much though. What plane?
Oh, be quiet. So then, you had also talked about adding the 75, the craftsmen bungalows that are younger than 100 years, because we talked about our cutoff being 100 years old. And also, some of the homes that you're including are, I think it was just the craftsmen bungalows. And the rationale for that is because they are in pretty good condition right now to do, correct?
Yes, because they haven't been, they haven't, they haven't been messed up yet. The integrity is so high that it's one of those you kind of want to document it before, before things happen.
Okay.
Lots of other early 20th century buildings that I don't think should be your top priority, but certainly that little grouping on Center Street is really, is really fantastic. You know, they really haven't been altered. That's pretty, that's pretty, you know, unusual that nobody's messed with them yet. And I know Center Street's had a lot of, you know, has had a lot of teardowns recently, so.
Yeah. The bungalows are the ones near the Aggie School. There's two, Helen Lane's House is one. Then there's two, you know, from the lights, if you turn right, it's the first two on the left, they're brown. They're really kind of cool looking.
Yeah, and they haven't, and it's still wood shingle, stained wood shingles, there's no.
Yeah.
And I think if I, from my kind of drive-by review, they, I think they still have, may have their original windows too, so it's, it's kind of neat when they haven't been touched yet, that you can at least, you know, document them and have them, have that on record.
1159 Somerset Ave, and that actually has had some good, good care taking, and I think there's vinyl siding on that right now.
Yeah, that one might.
That one, Pat, if you remember.
I remember Mrs. Carter.
Yeah.
The craftsmen houses and where they are, but isn't that changing our criteria?
That's what, that's one of the questions that we had talked about and, you know, that's what we're here to discuss.
Pat, can you slide the microphone down a little bit down to, I think it's, yeah, because I couldn't hear all of that, I want to get the whole question. Yeah, the mic's not picking it up, too bad.
The one's on Winter Street, of course, that's not that we were looking at to begin Are with Center Street and St. Morgansett, they're, you know, in the areas that we had started to look at. So if we're looking at trying to do area forms, and also the National Register Historic Districts, or other districts, then now would be the time to kind of like include those. That's my viewpoint.
Spies, bring them up.
Yeah. The other question I had was about the Standish Houses.
Yeah, that's a, far more complicated than you would expect. It's, I think for you, for the Historical Commission, it may be more of a question for your own, if you've got, you know, if you're going to have a demo delay and that sort of thing, if you want to have more information, like a really good description of them, so if somebody wants to alter them, you can have, you know, a new form for that, we could really update that, make sure it's all very clear and very detailed description. But the Massachusetts Historical Commission and the National Register have made their opinions on that already, so for that purpose, you know, you could certainly say they're preferably preserved or not preferably preserved.
So, those two homes are on the Bristol, are owned by Bristol Aggie at this point. And they are, they've had a determination on, from the National Register of Historic Districts. Was that through the Bridge Village District that existed because of?
Yeah, I think that, that decision came out of when they were redoing the bridge there, that the, that triggered a federal review, because they needed, because of the bridge replacement, and that, and the Park Service made a formal opinion, which is the equivalent of being on the National Register. So in terms of significance, that's already been done, you know, that's, you know, above my pay grade, so that part is already done for you. But if you want to have, you know, the history, you know, flesh out the history and maybe a really solid description of them, in case Bristol Aggie does have plans for them to alter them somewhat, you know, that might give you a little more leverage of what they look like now and that sort of thing, so though, you know, it's easy enough to leave those in, that would give you really helpful tools in negotiating with Bristol Aggie with whatever might come down the pike.
Okay, all right. What's the Standish Houses? Rafa, do you have an opinion?
This one?
The Thomas Standish and the Thomas and David Standish Houses next to the water?
I think it's just historical market.
Yeah, but what the question is, do we want a more detailed historic description of them? They're already been considered for the National Register for eligibility, and it's when it was part of the Bridge Village District, so they do have historic significance. But when I looked at those forms, they weren't very complete, were they?
No, they're, they're pretty scant.
Yeah. So do we want to include those in our survey? One of the houses is, the Thomas Standish House is 1845, and the David Standish House is 1790. So do we want to include those for Stacy to do a form on for a detailed description? Is my question to you.
First of all, I don't think the later one, the 1800s one, next to the river, that's, there's two Standish Houses, but.
Right.
One of them is, like I said, 1790, the other one is 18 something.
1845.
Right. But I don't think the 18, the 19th century one is owned by the Aggie School. So I don't think it is.
You're talking about the one right next to the river?
Yeah.
I don't think we'll see them.
All right, so that, that is by the.
No, I looked up the deeds, because I wanted to do the genealogy on the two houses. The older one is definitely owned by the Aggie School, and it's, I just said David, David, right?
1790.
The other one was a little more difficult, well, when I looked at the other one, I'm not convinced that. Does anyone have a Standish?
Thomas.
Thomas?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's right, because I did a search on that and.
So my question is, so would it, who of us to have Stacy give it to those two homes?
Well, is it a question of whether or not these houses are included in her list?
Right, do we want them in her list, yeah.
Why wouldn't you want the 1790 house at least? Okay, it doesn't look altered, I mean, when you look at it, you know.
No, it looks pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're asking the question.
That's the question.
Yeah, you're asking us. I think both should be part of it, especially the one with Bristol Aggie, because if anything's going to be altered, it's going to be that one. We may have some control over alterations or whatever. But I personally think both should be.
They both go back, by the way, to my Standish, I did that, so.
So you, you say yes then, Bill?
I would probably say yes on both of them unless.
Okay.
Unless one of them is kind of like 19th century, it's like not as cool or old or whatever.
Right, right. So Stacy, consensus is that we include the two Standish Houses, okay? Did anyone have, those were my questions. One of the houses that you have on, to remove from the preliminary list, I just wanted to make a comment about, and that was on 2386 Pleasant Street? But that was Anderson's House, for those in Dayton. And that's another one that's been altered, like beyond recognition.
That's what I was wondering, because I was looking at it going, something might be under there, but it really, I couldn't tell from the, you know, from driving past, so.
Yeah, it's the one with the two tea houses next to it, overlooking the water.
Oh, yes, with that great stone wall. I remember that one.
So, including the two Standish Houses back on the list, taking off the Reed Darling House, are there any other?
18.
That we were talking about as a, probably in a later form, because when they do Pine Street and Brook Street. Because the areas that you're basically looking at now are the Lower Four Corners, right, Stacy?
Yes. Yep, Lower Four Corners, Brick.
And like along Pleasant Street and what, Main, along Pleasant.
Right, the intersection of Pleasant and Main, right.
Do we want 1860 Milk Street added now?
Yes, I feel that 1860 Milk Street is in probably the top five or six in Dayton, that in addition to have. To the town of Dayton, but it is to the country. So, you can't say that about too many Dayton homes, you just.
Well, what was our, I think we, what was our limit, 90? Was that our, our magic number? I think that's still pretty close to 90, actually, if we include.
That would make it, where did I give your? The Milk Street one would make it 94.
Yeah, I don't think that, I think that's fine, because some of these are, I think there's a couple of graveyards, for example, in there, cemeteries, and there's not really a lot of work for those, so it's okay if the number's over a little bit, I'm not worried about that.
Yes, if we add, add 1860 Milk Street, and I think that puts us at 94 altogether, and you're good with that?
Yeah, that should be good. I think if it were 94 individual forms, it would be, it would be a little nerve, a little, make me a little nervous, but I think certainly with the areas and some graveyard, you know, cemeteries in there that don't require nearly as much research and description, I think that should be good. That should, that would work.
So we're good, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the amended survey list from Stacy Spies.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All right, and will, any further discussion? Okay, and we'll vote. Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you. Our Phase 1 meeting that we had with the Mass Historical Commission, well, Stacy's here in case she has anything to add. I did send everyone a summary email, so I hope that you read that, they had some comments about her report, which we had reviewed. Also from the, sent us a Historic Property Survey Manual for us to look at, and a technical list that Stacy also uses, so we have that information. Survey list now, are you doing the draft inventory form and?
Yes, I've, yeah, I've got two, and that'll be, I think the Phase 2 deadline is, oh, this Friday. I have two survey forms, I've already done 237 Main, and I'm doing 207 Main, the Smith Memorial, I'm going, you're going to see me in the next day or so with a nice one. You're going to see me in the next day or so with a nice warm weather. I'm going to come out and do the photographs. And then usually what I also do for a sample form is an area. So I'm going to see, since we didn't decide until tonight, that might be a little tight to finish it by Friday. But I will try and I'll, I'll try and do maybe one of the smaller ones, maybe something like the Brick by Brick Church. If not, I'll toss in another small, you know, single inventory form. But that's usually, you know, MHC just wants us to do that so they know, you know, they can have an idea of what's, what's coming. So, oh, actually, I'm fairly far along on, um, what you might call it, the, oh, down near Ellery Channing House, the Rufus Whitmarsh House. I did a lot of research on that, trying to figure out some things. I might put that one into.
Which house was that?
Uh, the Rufus Whitmarsh.
Yeah, yeah. On Elm Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, so I, that's, we should be in good shape. I'm going to come down to you guys and, you know, over the next two days and do some photos.
Well, just let me know or you can notify Chief McDonald and the police so that they know you're in.
Yeah, I heard the weather was going to be so nice. I decided it was time, it was time to definitely do some field work.
Okay, so as Stacy said, phase two ends on December 17th. We'll be having another consultant meeting with the Mass Historical Commission again, a Zoom meeting. And then phase three begins where Stacy's heavy lifting work begins and that ends on May 6th. So, does anyone have any other questions for Stacy at this time? You're welcome to hang out with us.
I'm going to go, I'm, I'm going to go finish another email to my other town survey. So I'm going to do that and then relax for the evening. It was good to see you all.
Okay, good night. We're making progress. Well, next, this, on our agenda is the Historical Marker Program. Sent out the letters and the applications to the homeowners in the Warf District, Historical District, and the Quorum Shipyard District. But I don't think, have you heard anything, Rafa? Also had two more inquiries about the, um, the marker program. So I encourage them again to get their applications in and go from there. Applications, I met with the CPC to discuss our little letter of eligibility for funding. And they voted to take it under advisement for review. And what do you guys meet? This Thursday, Bill? Is that when you're meeting again? Bill?
What's your name?
Thursday?
Yeah.
All right. So, um, just that I met with you guys on.
You want to refund the whole meeting or just any specific for us or the whole?
No, they just took our application under advisement, so. And then you'll bring back anything in January that they talk about this week?
So we voted on a number of advisements on a number of projects. The Town Clerk's project of restoring.
Oh, that's true.
Restoring the, uh, the vital statistics books and that sort of thing. And we passed. There was the playground thing. This is the second go around on this apparently. It's around 250K that they look, they want, the Playground Commission.
Kevin Smith.
Who was that?
Kevin Smith.
Okay, I'm going to make a note of that. It's not too clear, I mean, on, on whether or not where, where they want this thing. It's kind of expensive, in my opinion, but it seems a 250K is a lot for playground equipment. But anyway, and, and also they don't, no one, didn't seem like he was sure or on, on whether it should go behind the backstop, you know, with the little fielders or in the back with the last, that was the last location of, of the equipment logs. And so I don't, I don't. Again, it's a little, it's under advisement. I don't know what's going to happen.
So Thursday, all of those projects will be discussed, including, including ours. Okay, that's good.
And, and then the Historic Commission, phase two was taken under advisement as well, right?
I submitted the invoice for phase one.
Okay, but didn't, didn't you make a pitch?
Yeah, no, I made for our, yes, that was our.
So that was brought into an advisement as well. That was the major highlights of it.
Thank you. The Mass Historical Commission met on December 8th to review the letters of eligibility for the FY22 survey and planning grant. And I haven't heard anything. Balance is $735.02. At our last meeting, dollars towards overlay map. So we have $435.02 to spend. FY23?
Yeah, we're meeting Thursday, the Capitol Overlay Committee. So you've submitted your five year plan.
Yeah.
And the budget starts in January.
Expense to submit from the mailings for our for reimbursement for $9.52. We mailed out the applications to seven homeowners. So I'm looking for a motion to reimburse myself, Patricia Gales, for $9.52 for the mailing expense. There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? See none, let's vote. Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
I think I'll abstain. Pam and Pat, if you would sign the two papers and the receipt for me, and then I can submit that. Thank you. So next, Gail was going to bring us some information on the James Briggs House plaque. But she's not here, so we'll have to put that off. New business, Segregated School Inventory and Storage. Ken and Bill and Rafa and I schoolhouse and made this inventory. Did everyone get a copy of it? There were windows, there were doors, there was a fireplace. Door hooks, there were, there was a nameplate and bricks. So we have to figure out what we want to do with that because we talked about using some of those items as a display for for over at Bristol Aggie. That's what we have. Thinking if we were going to do a display, that we could take one of the doors and hang a door somewhere with a picture display. Because, I mean, kids, students aren't going to look at a door latch and, or a brick and say, oh, wow, that was in a house that was here. But if we're using the, the door that came and say it comes from the house and do a story of Nate Crane House, who he was, what the house was, if that would work. Just food for thought. We'd have to look for a place where they could hang the door.
The idea, it's just not, I don't feel that it's going to be our, you know.
Right, um, Rafa did forward an email to me that once we have an idea of what our, that's we have, you know, to let her know. This is Robin, right? And we collaborate. So, Rafa, if you want to make an appointment with her for January?
That's what I propose, maybe after the holidays.
Yeah.
I'm going to send us a follow up email.
Yeah. Set a date, pick a date.
Anyway, first thing I want to, spam poll alert.
I know you won't let it go. Be good. Bowen House, and there's a one It's like, it's, it's, it's too beautiful to be sitting in the schoolhouse not being seen. And even though there's a drawer missing, big front on it, so at least you can see and see them. It's a furniture or whatever it is. And in court. Yeah. So I mentioned it to Ken because I saw him on one of my walks or something, and he's like, why not?
Yeah, I've already spoken to Jim Agia.
Okay.
About that. So we're going to, I told him that the society doesn't want this cabin over here anymore because we can't afford to put the doors on that. And I suggested that he put the cabin, that cabin over here.
Yeah.
You guys saw the cabin over there. It belongs to the Historic Commission, but the Historic Society will be putting displays in there, similar to what we used to have before, but there'll be more stuff. And we'll figure out a way to lock the doors or whatever. And Historic Commission obviously can put some stuff there too. You do have this one over here, so I'm not sure how much.
Yeah.
Extra stuff. So they're going to do that. They're going to do that for us. But they also talked about, we had asked, similar to what the different Nate Crane House, when they, before they tore down the Bowen House on York Street, we went and, I don't know, did you go?
Nah.
Yeah, Rena Santos was the town historian. My wife is the resident of the society. And we went, we asked for certain things to be saved. They brought it over to the Van Gysen Building, which leaked. Things got moldy, and from there they moved the stuff to the dump, the transfer station, I should say. And where it's being stored right now is going to be torn down. So Jim Agia asked me, is it okay if we put this stuff in the school? I said it's okay with me, but I wanted to bring it back to the board here for you guys to take a vote on. I also told him that we would not be interested in anything that's moldy or anything like that. That's why we, something that we're going to destroy, we're going to throw away, it's as much as we know. So he said he would have that piece moved over here. The same day he puts the stuff over there. So if you guys are in favor of storing someone's stuff, it's beams, it's doors, it's similar to what we have for the Nate Crane House. I don't know exactly what it is. But if you're interested, you should take a vote on it and then somebody can send Jim Agia a letter saying that we're okay with it and that we want to be notified when the stuff's going to be put over there. So we can actually take a look at some of the stuff and we may decide we don't want to take it, keep it at the dump or whatever. So that we also can get an inventory of this stuff, and we can also make sure that that piece is brought over here. I don't think it's a lot of stuff, but we, we had asked for a lot of stuff, but Jim Agia had told us before that they didn't give us a lot of the stuff. We went and we mocked everything, blah, blah, blah. We didn't get everything. But it was beams and stuff like that, so. I'm, I'm interested in seeing what is over there. I want to be there when they do move the stuff over there. Everybody else, obviously, is welcome.
So are they moving it from?
They're moving it from the dump because if you're going to tear that building down, it's a, it's a hat or something. It's falling apart. I'm going to hear it. And I told them, as a result of our conversation we had there a few weeks ago, that we will probably be storing it maybe for a year and a half, maybe a little longer, because I think we're going to go for the CPC, right? To restore the Segregated School. Obviously, some of the stuff we may not want to keep there. But I think for a year and a half that we have a place to, to store it. And it's historical stuff, so. As it goes on.
Main Street.
Main Street.
B O W E N.
Now, is that where a former member lived or did you live in the house next door to it? Where did they?
Oh, no, he lived next door.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was two houses on the, on the property.
It's not new. No, no, Nick lived in a
Yeah.
There were two houses on the property. His house is one of them.
No.
No, no, Ken. There's two houses on the property. Yes, that's true. And the house that we took the stuff from was on that property. Nick lived next door, over the stone wall.
There were two houses there. They tore down the Bowen House and they replaced and built a new house.
No, there was a house.
Is that the house that Nick, no?
No.
Okay, so how, he had nothing to do with this property?
No, nothing. He lived next.
It's a house in the back. It's a little gazebo or something like that, I think, in the Bowen House. But in the old days, you could put two houses on one lot and then you can't do that anymore. So whoever purchases, and I want to take the house, whole house down and apparently restore it. I think they did a good job. The other house, next door, the mix house, by the way. I'm sorry, I had a conversation with him about it. Maybe it was a one way.
Yeah, you're going, what the hell? Sure you did.
On, on that swing note, I'm going back. Is there an initiative to put some more stuff in there? Not necessarily this work, the way it's spelled, no?
So I am voting no. So when the vote goes around, I'm voting no.
No?
Uh huh.
So. Well, it's, it's a gamble because we, the town historian asked that this stuff be saved. They're going to throw it in the dump if we don't save it. And I haven't seen Jim in some week, actually. I love your story.
And storage. Because.
Ah, is that a temporary climate care facility? Because she's new, you know what I mean? Sorry, is there any other area that we can say? Other than my barn, you know, where could we put it? Right here?
We also have, you know, we also have items that are already in there.
Right.
Stored that. It was like way, I think it's even further out than a year and a half because that, we haven't even begun to discuss goals for that. You're probably talking at least about two to two and a half years, as far as that goes. I have stuff that has some historic value. Beans was tossed into the dump. If, if we can say that it's a temporary storage, and I know Dayton is not good on temporary, I would, I, I would feel better about it and at least we can work. We also have all of the stuff that came from the Nate Crane in there that is going to need a permanent place too, because it's stored in there right now.
Dumped now, it's going to be demolished or whatever. Funding for a trailer or something that could maybe end up at the garage, Town Garage. Is there no other type that are putting it in a one room schoolhouse where it's going to find brothers and sisters and accumulate? My opinion, you know, those storage pods, the, a trailer, a, a truck body, anything, you know. Um, the point is, there has to be some house to store.
I get the impression that there was no.
Something could be.
Where is that, where is that money for, for, for pad or whatever, where is? No, was that, was that? No, was that, was that? CM, we think, they're twenty-three and a half million dollars, but. But the CPC money? I think gas stations are already have to been in, I think the remember, they think so, they're talking. Next time, I've got a goal that I wanted to start.
Let's say again. What we want, what is the?
Okay, cool, fine. So we're talking about the Segregated Schoolhouse, and we're talking about, uh, storage. So. With the Segregated Schoolhouse, we can put that on the agenda as a project for January, what do we wanna do with it? What are the plans going to be? Storage for this stuff. Explore it for. With a review of where it's gonna go, and making a plan where all of that stuff is going to go. You know, what is the plan going to be for? Because if we're not gonna store from the Bowen House, then what are we gonna do with the stuff from Nate Crane's house? That's already there. There, it's the same problem. Both of them need a permanent storage, and it's not the schoolhouse. So that's the second discussion, is permanent storage of our artifacts.
Oh, making decisions about.
Obviously, there, we are.
Storage.
All of that Segregated School. So we would have a say in it, so, I mean, he asked me what my, I said, let's bring it back, I wanna bring it back to the commission. I can't just make that decision.
Okay, so, about the decision to move the.
I made the request, we had a conversation, I made the request, I didn't think that that necessarily technical for a vote, and we know we can't fit it over there, right? Once it becomes a schoolhouse, it's too big to hold nobody, but it will block windows, all the truck doors, which is absolutely what we wanna do.
So, but how do you enforce, like, the? Stuff that's in, besides the schoolhouse stuff, how did that? These cabinets with the drawers, what you wanna call it, a bay or whatever.
I was starting to, I'm not, I'm not positive. I was starting from the office, we needed to put it someplace, I don't think this building here was even part of us.
But, but did someone come to the board assortment and then have it?
Well.
Indeed. We made aware that that building was gonna be torn down. We have a demolition delay. We couldn't get anybody to take the house, so we went in and said, could you save some of this stuff so we can preserve some of this stuff in this house? Maybe we wanna be carrying that. And that's what happened, unfortunately, once the Van Geizen house, uh, VFW, and the roof leaked, they sold it, they put it at the dump, and this hut that's falling apart, and we're gonna tear it down. Decisions to whether or not we wanna store the stuff over there. I personally.
Is it a decision that, well, if the money say to, if at some point, we're not gonna do it for a while, well, it was written up to to restore that schoolhouse to some degree, and that's a question how much money you'd wanna spend on it and all that. So would that be the only deciding factor on whether it happens to CPC and then the accordion? Anyway, so the town, say we did a proposal, and we, CPC passed it, and it went on, it got passed. Is that the only? Authority there?
Yeah, what's the rest, what CPC makes a recommendation, asks that you put on a warrant, they recommend that those funds.
I guess that's enough, right?
Then it goes to the town, the town votes on it, what's the town votes on it?
Yeah, that's it, okay, well.
Right now. Storage. We have to make a plan, what is going to happen to that stuff, you know? And make a plan to store the things properly in another place. So it's really kind of a twofold or threefold kind of thing.
Is there space in prime time?
Oh, it's open again, though.
I have a question. Floor, you know, we've repurposed flooring, we've started a committee to think what we do do to kind of weed out this, these items. We put them in storage in another, you know, can something go in a display case? If you go to the post office, they have fossils and interesting things, and is, um.
Right.
I see both sides, yeah, is it gonna sit there for? Here, does it go? At the same time, those storage pods tend to be storage wars and never-ending solution, and yes, they're pricey.
So, I think that's a good idea.
What we're purposing?
Well, I, that's. But it's really not of value to anyone if it's sitting in.
Exactly.
It's, we might as well just get rid of it if it's just gonna sit there, right? So if it's not something that people can learn from, or repurpose in a town building. Would work if we resell it to someone who wants to put in a mantle, or a door, a pack, you know, whatever is in there for folks who do have those older homes. Otherwise, I really don't see any difference between dumping it and keeping it in there.
Well, here's an idea, why don't we have a store that displays all this stuff? Maybe they can have a little auction or something, or bid or something on each object?
Yeah, like what would we do, like?
What does that, what?
I mean, I understand we work on a budget, so we can't really fundraise unless we have a goal, right? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I see both sides, I hate to see it go, but I also hate to just see it. Means nothing, you know, we've taken.
Putting it in storage like a graveyard almost, incredible.
Yeah, exactly, it's one step from the dump, in my opinion, and, you know, so now the home, to VFW, to the hut. So it's energy, it's time, it's waste, and now it's at the school, which is again considered temporary.
Historical commission before, which I think is good.
Yes.
We're in the book.
Yes.
You know. I think I like the idea of a committee to explore what's the stuff for tonight. I think we have to have two votes, one, to move the drawers over here, that's at the Bowen House, to move them here. To what, to what we're gonna do to save the materials that are from the Bowen House that are now at the hut, at the dump, at the trash transfer.
Wanna restore the missing drawer? Should have done, any good furniture guy could.
Explore that.
Come out of our funds to do that drawer?
Also talked about that day, I think we talked about it, like, just putting a drawer up front.
A blind drawer. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The mold to the shape of the others.
I don't know, no, I don't think I've. That's kind of a waste. If somebody could come up, that somebody, oh, this is cool, you know, and they thought, oh, no, that one doesn't open, you know? I mean, most expensive part of the drawer would be the face, and reproducing the poles from, you know, the. Might as well just have, I mean, do the.
Well, you're talking about money, but just get back to repurposing wood, if you've been in town hall lately, you notice the counter for Clarkson and Treffers Office, that's all wood from James Briggs' house.
Yep.
You see lights, as you walk into the foyer, there's lights with these old wood from the James Briggs' house. They made a barn door out of the wood from the James Briggs' house. Now, it doesn't say it on it, that's something maybe we can advocate that this.
The plaque is gonna indicate that.
But there has been some use for that. I would hate to see this wood that hundred fifty, twenty years old, just to be brought to the dump. And when the town historian, I get it she's not here, town historian and others asked that that this be preserved, and the people who tore it down preserve some of the stuff that we had asked for.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask for first motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the drawers from the Bowen House over to Town Hall for combined use between the Historical Society and the Historical Commission.
It's the whole piece, it's the cabinet, I mean, only the basements, two pieces.
Rafa, is so moved?
Yep.
Okay, I'll send them.
Okay, any further discussion? Do you know, okay, well, vote Rafa.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion to move the wood and other items that are presently stored at the transfer station that are from the Bowen House to the Segregated Schoolhouse for storage. With, I think, um. Really? For the wood, and. Station, to the Segregated Schoolhouse for storage with a review within a year. So moved. You're a second? Further discussion? Rafa?
Well, before we go, how about, um, where is it now, this wood, it's someplace?
Transfer station. Except the transfer station. Just, just keep it in mind before you make the vote, and I'm not voting on this, I'm obviously supporting. We've asked this person to, who tore the house down, to preserve this for historical reasons. The town agreed to that, the town picked it up, they brought it to the Van Geizen building. From there, they brought it, when they sold it, they brought it to the hut, and then we're gonna possibly say, don't preserve it. So it's gonna be difficult, I think, in the future when we ask anybody, anytime somebody comes with the building, and they wanna tear it down, we're not able to find somebody to move the building. It's gonna be difficult for us to ask the town to do this again for us, so just keep them going.
It's just a big piece of wood or whatever.
Can I just ask one question? Which, you talked about the materials that were used in the Town Hall?
Yeah.
And I'm so for that. Where was that material kept?
All right, I want, there's two possibilities, either at the old police station. Or at the high ground.
Okay. Good question, so they found?
Just keep in mind, that wasn't our stuff though, right? That wasn't something.
What does it matter if it belonged in the town, we're all the same town.
We advocated to preserve the old houses in town, and when they get knocked down, we advocated, at least in the past, I won't be advocating in the future, quite frankly, if we're gonna just, four years down the road, we're gonna say, just get rid of it. I won't be, you know, I won't, I won't be, but we advocated that that be preserved, the Bowen House stuff, to be preserved.
The commission.
Commission, I get that some of you people, I think you might have been on it, but everybody else was on the line at that time, I think I was on the line at that time.
So the difference with the James Briggs' house is the town, as the owners of the house, stored it.
But it was historical, and they preserved it, which is a wonderful plan, we're all for that. So I don't see any difference. This is part of Dyton, and we wanna preserve it, and again, I think that's a wonderful thing.
Right.
So if they found a spot for that stuff. Which is great. So that vacated some space somewhere, wherever it was, I didn't know where it was.
Yeah. But the town didn't ask to preserve the stuff in the Bowen House. It was the Historic Commission who asked to preserve some of the stuff. And initially said Van Geizen Hall, because it wasn't being used. And then when we sold it, they, I didn't realize, I didn't even know where it went. They apparently went to the transfer station, to answer your question. And that building's gonna be torn down, a little hut, or whatever they call it, is gonna be torn down, and so they asked me, what do you guys wanna do with it? I can't make that decision, it's your decision, but I think we're doing, we won't be doing justice to the historic commission if we're deciding, and we're not gonna try and preserve the stuff that we asked for just a few years ago.
Okay, can the Historic Commission make a ruling that, well, I'm not in favor of putting any more stuff in that, in that schoolhouse, but authority to, uh, keep any more? Schoolhouse, I mean, that's.
What, there is stuff there already being stored, this is my point. You take the stuff, the Historical Commission from the past, asked from the Bowen House for this to be saved and that it's been stored. Now they're asking, it's being asked to be stored at the schoolhouse with the stuff that's from the Nate Crane House. The bottom line is, we have to find a different storage method. We don't have that yet, we have two, we have items from two historic homes that we should figure out what to do with. In the meantime, that's why I said, within a year on the motion, you give us some time to think about it, to make a plan, so that we can have an adequate storage plan, if we're gonna be getting stuff from homes.
Isn't this motion specific to some specific item that's?
The Bowen House items, yes.
Okay.
We act on this, now we have stuff from the Nate Crane House and the Bowen House. Because if you're gonna say the Bowen House stuff can't go to Segregated Schoolhouse, then get the Nate Crane stuff out too. We gotta treat it the same.
Well, maybe the motion should be more encompassing, sort of like, I'd be looking more like a any stuff that's in there, say, after, say, a year or something?
Now it's gonna be my next.
Should be removed, because we'd be looking at that point, hopefully, on getting the project going with the schoolhouse, so.
That was the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The motion was. The Bowen House, and it would be for one year that we would revisit. What ideas do we have to repurpose, so it's one year? So Pat has indeed put a timeline, for lack of a better word, that, she's bought it, she's bought it twelve months. So, the motion is to store the wood. Yeah. Um, it was so moved by myself, Rafa's second it, and. I know, I know.
That's worth, delay, demolition, can we do it?
I went to one, I went to one in there, a man gave me a bunch of flowerpots, I think we were, I mean.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna vote, Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
No.
Dan?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, motion carries four, two, one. Thank you. My next motion would be. To explore repurposing our, um, historical artifacts and/or storage.
I'm so moved.
You're a second?
I second.
Right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote Rafa.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Who would like to volunteer for this committee?
Well, what would it entail?
Pretty wide open.
A bottle of champagne.
Far from at any level of understanding the significance of the buildings and what they might need. But if it's anyway, I just not sure I wanna be the leader simply because I think my knowledge is limited. But if you tell me to go meet with somebody because of a window we've already opened in one of our buildings, um, I'm happy to take pictures and see what their needs are and how perhaps we can repurpose.
Anyone else?
I'm tertiary.
Okay. So the committee will consist of Pam, myself, and Rafa.
Every Thursday.
Every Thursday.
Okay, wait a minute.
Uh, sometime in January, we will
Send an email to Jimmy Aguirre, then I'll be
I will send an email to Jimmy Aguirre.
He's over here as well as a story opening hour.
Yeah.
Someone of us wanna be present and get the stuff.
Oh, yes.
You might be able to look at the stuff at the dump too.
Yeah.
See what's over there.
All right. Next on our agenda are the ornaments. For many
You know, it's blue.
Yes, it's blue. I meant to bring well, um, so Do you remember, Pat? I think I asked.
I do not remember. Because what about the other ornaments? They just one was the schoolhouse. So one was Council Oak. One was whatever.
One was the Town Hall. There was, there's like four or five of them.
The old high school was one.
Old high school, yeah. So anyway, um people about selling them. And he said he was willing to sell them if they were advertised. And of course, this was the first week in December. Um, but we also have to research like what they were sold for, what was the purpose of the money? I think it went to the Segway Ganses School and where the money went or the sale of those things. So, um, I can make a few phone calls, figure out if it is
Merna should know.
Merna should know and Suma Dara should know.
Yep.
Um, so I will call those two people, figure out, you know, where the money was going. Um, because certainly we would have to have a destination. Now, my accountant also said that once the funding was completed, the Board of Selectmen would probably have to accept the fund. There is a Segway Ganses School gift account.
Uh huh.
And that right now have wound up five thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. So, um, I will look into that. So we can get it set up for next year, plenty of time, so it can be advertised, so all of the townspeople have the knowledge that the ornaments are for sale.
And we just, I know it's a little out of season, perhaps we try selling two dozen of firecracker.
Yeah.
Just a thought, it might display a spark in interest and
So we have to have a reason means we'll pour a bottle.
Yeah, because that was our pre the money with a trade.
I'm ready.
Um, that was what I think Ken clarified, that we need a specific cause, so.
Right.
Okay, we're storing those at the Segway Ganses School?
It's temporary.
We didn't even know they were there.
No, because they weren't there. There was a time they weren't there.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
And they're there now. When I was new, when I was new to the commission, I where these ornaments were, because I had moved to town a year that the
Yeah.
Okay. And then there was still, there was still some leftovers. And I said, where are they? And they were Maybe they were under the rubble at VFW or I, I don't wanna, maybe they were in the
There we go. So, all right, so I will follow up with that. Um, next on our agenda is the social media Facebook page. Um, yes, we can have a Facebook page. Um, we will need an administrator. Um, and we have to ask the Board of Selectmen for
Commission.
So we need to send that a request. Do we have someone that would be interested in being the administrator of the page? And also Mike Mullin would be
Mike Mullin would be administrator also.
Being administrator. Do we wanna have a Facebook page?
Nothing bad about it, maybe. The ones I like, you know, they show an unusual item. Oh, prizes and ornaments. I don't know, you know? Another member, kind of like, two more members at this point.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, I'm in, I'm you all the time and it should be geared to our committee, um, about our projects and what we do and, you know, you know, put out at once a moment that apply for the marker and
What do you feel about being the administrator of Rafa?
Sure. Here.
You would be willing to do, okay?
You would like to educate the public since everybody's
Yeah.
is on social media these days. As everybody.
I'm debating.
Are you? Oh.
I'd like to add to YouTube channel as well. We have a YouTube and Twitter and Instagram.
Well, why don't we start with the Facebook page?
I mean, I have a lot, but
That's fine.
Yeah.
YouTube, YouTube would be great.
We are in YouTube meetings.
We are on YouTube meetings, but there's no reason why we then can't post the link every month on our Facebook page to watch.
Hmm. So, all right. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to send a request for permission for a Facebook page for the Historical Commission to the Board of Selectmen.
So.
You're a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, um, Rafa?
Aye.
Bill? Dan?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
We'll be voting on that on the twenty ninth.
On the twenty ninth. The materials committee will be attending our January eleventh meeting. I'll be sending He's very interested in our historic property survey update. Um, I talked to him about us attending that, planning So I talked to Kerry Easterday and we're on the agenda for January nineteenth to share our progress with the survey update. So then, Eddie and when me? Because that'll be, that'll be helpful to them too, because the planning board. I shared with all of you from about Brook Street. Historic status of the property on Brook Street. It's four sixty-one Brook Street. It's behind there. It's now known as one sixth street to be developed. And they wanted to know if they had any, um, restrict require them to come to the Historic Commission for, you know, um, don't have any local historic districts or bylaws. So I note that they did not have to there's no public here, so, um, no public input. List of the twenty twenty-two dates. They are all the second Tuesday of the month after they were the same as twenty twenty? My apologies.
No, I think that you were busy, so.
I was quickly sending things last night.
Sure.
Make any sense to me. Anyway, our next meeting is January eleventh, that's seven. Okay.
Um, should we do anything going forward? And it's sixty percent attendance? Well, like when do you start? So, I mean, if he's at zero, so maybe he has a perfectly good reason to not be here.
Sixty percent in a year.
In a year. In a
Six months.
Okay, it's six months.
I talked to the town administrator, because, well, we had a problem in CPC, uh,
The same thing?
Not the last one, but the last mayor at night. When I got there, that meeting, there were only four secretaries, secretaries that you can't, and I thought there were five, and they said, oh, we're not gonna have So I, I said, wait a minute, not people.
Yeah.
And only four show up?
Yeah.
That doesn't seem right. So I, and then Tom Burke, who's the chairman, he also the administrator. And the administrator said there's an, you know, there's a bylaw. If you're an appointed, then you have to have six, but it's really not, it wasn't well thought out. I mean, it was sort of sixty percent. It was every six months. Did you do at least sixty? Were you you think about it, it doesn't make sense, because sixty percent of six meetings, that's three point six, it's not a three count.
Did you have a warrant to vote?
No, not that one. So after I did that, the word must have got out, because of the next meeting.
Good job.
I will reject bylaw, um, just to be sure.
Well, we certainly knew that Gail wasn't coming.
Yes. She wasn't feeling well.
She's not feeling well, but we haven't
I think the procedure to
Go from there.
But I thought I just relayed what Mike Mullin said about it. He said that if you don't make the sixty percent, I don't know whether the committee has to vote to eject somebody or not.
I will, I will follow up on all of that.
I don't think it's all right.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't think so? Okay.
Has to go back to the appointing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. So I don't, because it, I wanna say that
That's what they did with the
It was a time of pox and wreck. Something that Dave Rose was on, he was, he didn't attend, but if you, if they're able to give you a reason why they weren't able to attend, then you can overlook it. It's not automatic that something, because they missed a couple of meetings.
Especially with availability in Zoom, if you can't come to the meeting.
Right.
On your home.
I don't think it's really serious about this.
No?
I don't think it's serious.
Okay, um, is there anything else? For a motion to adjourn?
I'm a motion.
Yeah, second.
Okay, motion is made, accepted. No discussion.
Someone has more, someone has more. You are voting on that?
So an aye, and thank you, everyone.